Welcome today to our Joint Council and Planning Commission Workshop. We'd like to also welcome Chairman Fritz McDonald here that is sitting next to me. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, and ask for confirmation of posting and roll call.
Thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law, and we have Mayor Hardy absent from the meeting, and we have Planning Commissioner Kevin Smith absent from the meeting.
Thank you. We'll now turn this time over for public comment. Just a reminder that during this portion of public comment, when you come up, you have three minutes, and it needs to be on what is on the agenda. And so we welcome those who are in the council chamber to please come up, and those who might want to call, please call at 702-589-9629. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Seeing nobody on the phone and no one in the chamber that wants to come up and do public comment, we'll move forward with the workshop agenda. We'll have Michael Mays come up for item number one.
Good afternoon, council members and members of the planning commission. I am Michael Mays, your Community Development Director and Acting Deputy City Manager. So Title XI of the city code, which is commonly referred to as the zoning ordinance, is the regulations that the city utilizes for development within the community. For years, members of the city council, members of the planning commission, staff, and folks in the community have said that there needs to be updates to this code. This code has not had a major update since 1988. And the type of things that we were hearing from folks was that it's hard to read, chapters are scattered, some of the terms are dated. And so this year, the city hired Lisa Wise Consulting, a firm that specializes in zoning ordinances, and they have done a thorough analysis of our zoning code, Title XI. They have engaged with stakeholders within the community to hear from them, including members of the business community, about what works and what does not work. And they have prepared this code diagnosis and recommendations report, which is contained in your packet. Today is a workshop, so that means that the city council and planning commission can't give direction, can't give a motion on how to proceed. However, staff is looking for your feedback. After the consultants come up here and present and give their overview and their assessment of what they think are the key priorities, we want to hear from you if you agree with those priorities. Also, we're going to be interested in hearing from you on what are the most important aspects of the code for the city to focus on. So with that, I will invite Jen Murillo and Ethan Stan from Lisa Wise Consulting to come up, give their presentation, and answer your questions.
Thank you so much, Michael. Good afternoon, council members and commissioners. As Michael mentioned, I'm Jen Murillo, a director with Lisa Wise Consulting, LWC. LWC is an economics and planning firm based out of California. Our core service is zoning code updates. We have completed over 80 projects across the country, and I'm here with my colleague, Ethan Stan, Lead Associate with LWC, and we'll be tag teaming this presentation for you. For the presentation, I know you have it in your packet, I'll be going through just an overview, background on the project and the context. Ethan will speak to a summary of community engagement and the key findings of our analysis and our recommendations. Then we'll open it up for questions and the discussion. So first, why we're here and what we're working toward. Boulder City is a community that is shaped by a unique history and a unique past. We understand that the community has upheld a really strong commitment to controlled growth and to preservation of the historic character of the community and its small-town charm. And we see those values really strongly reflected in your master plan and in your current strategic plan. We see aspirational policies for high-quality redevelopment, for promoting housing diversity and affordability, looking to enhance the vitality you have in your downtown, and also focusing on stimulating development in special planning areas, like around the airport area. So these core policies and contexts are things that we pay keen attention to as we go through this analysis process. As Michael mentioned, the last time your zoning code was comprehensively updated was over 35 years ago. So it has not kept pace with things that have occurred over that time. The region has evolved, market conditions have changed, legal new bills, legal requirements have been shifted as well, and also best planning practices that we work with have also advanced. So this diagnostic review is the first step to be able to identify areas where the code could be improved and areas where there are kind of misalignments between the code and the policy direction and priorities of the city. Just stepping back for just a second to talk about what a zoning code can and cannot do, as much as I would love to say updating your zoning code is going to fix all of your problems, it will not. But what the zoning code can do is it regulates the land use, what can be built, and what that use is within your community. It includes certain standards for building mass, height, where buildings can be placed, compatibility standards that usually relates to things like outdoor lighting, or noise, or hours of operation. Citywide standards are also included, parking requirements, standards for signs, and also the procedures for how development projects come through the city in terms of the review process and what findings need to be made to approve them. Zoning codes do not regulate the free market. They don't set policy. Your policy is set in your master plan and in your strategic priorities. It cannot override any laws set by higher levels of government, state, federal laws. It can't control specific tendencies. You want a certain business to move into this certain spot, the zoning code can't do that for you. One thing that every zoning code must do is conduct a balancing act as well, balancing flexibility with predictability. So in this case, and that balance is specific to every community. It's what works best for you and your community, and how the community is to develop and continue to grow. So in that case, that's looking at the scope and level of specificity that you have in your zoning code versus what you want to remain open-ended and being negotiated on kind of a case-by-case basis with the applicant or developer. So again, that's unique based on every community, but it's something that we have to consider and make decisions on during a code update process. The objectives we have in looking forward for this project is to modernize the code, looking at best planning practices, and seeing how they can fit and be adapted into Boulder City's code, implementing the master plan and strategic plan. Your zoning code is a tool to help get you to where you want to be. Again, it can't solve everything, but it's a tool to help you implement those policies and priorities. But we also want to keep in mind that there may be future updates to your master plan and changes to your strategic plan, and so keeping that in mind to set a foundation for future updates is appropriate. And then absolutely, we want to maintain the consistency with the characteristics that make Boulder City unique, but also be responsive and absolutely be legally sound. So those are some of the objectives that we're really honed in on for this project. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ethan Stan to go through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jen. Council members, members of the commission, thank you very much for welcoming us back. I will be talking about our community engagement first and foremost before diving into the findings of our report. We have a lot to go over, not a lot of time. We want to save a lot of time for discussion, so I'll try to keep it brief. It's 30 pages of a report to squeeze into about 15 minutes of this, so hope you did your homework, and I think we'll be able to get through it. We came to Boulder City first in March to get our in-person introduction to your community. We had a great kickoff meeting with Michael and Nikisha. We had a tour that took us from the Dry Lake bed up to Bootleg Canyon, and then we sat down with a really broad cross-section of the community to hear directly from code users. People use the code every day and every week, what's working, what's not working, and what they think could change. We talked with 18 people across seven different interviews. There were somewhere between interviews and focus groups, and this included a really, really broad cross-section. I mean, we talked with eight different people from eight different departments and city staff. We spoke with business owners who had been here from nine years to 55 years, local and regional housing developers, and appointed officials. And up top, I really want to stress that everybody was very friendly, and they clearly loved this community and had some really actionable ideas for how we could improve the code and how it can make it an even better place to live. But we didn't sit down to just hear how wonderful everything was. The questions we asked reflected that. We heard a lot about how the frustrations with the code have built up over many years. One of the first things people said to us, honestly, was how grateful they were that we were kind of opening this conversation back up, that from many people's perspective, it had been long overdue. And what we have on the slide here is kind of the top themes from what we heard. What we heard most consistently was that the code has kind of created more problems than it's been solving, and it's a lot of people's opinions. Nearly everybody's mentioned variances as a particular frustration, that they're overused, that instead of being a regulatory tool for exceptional cases, their use is a routine workaround for a lot of the issues that people are experiencing. I'm seeing some smiles and nods, so maybe we're on the right track. And to us, that's a clear sign that the existing regulations are in some way misaligned with the kind of development that landowners and business people are actually trying to do on the ground, and that's what the quote in the upper right drives home, the fact we have to use variances shows there's a broken code. That is a direct quote. And the theme of regulations not keeping up with the times extended to other areas, these related to parking requirements, sign regulations, code enforcement, and other modern housing types like townhomes and accessory dwelling units, and how those fit into the code. We'll be touching on all of that in the next couple slides. And like I mentioned earlier, I mean, many of the people we spoke with have been here for decades, and they were either raised here or chose years ago to raise their own families here. And, you know, we heard loud and clear, this is a type of community where, as one person we spoke with said, that they weren't, he wasn't afraid to let his son ride around on his bike, you know, after dark. It was that safe and that comfortable of a community. And, you know, these more technical regulatory issues we were talking about were mentioned alongside these bigger-picture anxieties that people seem to be feeling about, how, you know, the Boulder City is and continues to be a great place to live. It's been slow to evolve and to accommodate what might be needed for its next chapter. Employers shared with us that they've had difficulty finding workers who are willing to make the drive over the hill from the homes they can afford to the jobs here in town. We heard from several people, even city staff, that housing affordability is increasingly a high barrier to making a life here. And then for retirees, people who have already raised their families here are having a hard time finding options for comfortably downsizing so they can live out the rest of their years in the place that they love. To close on a brighter note, though, on this slide, we want to echo how often we heard praise for city staff, for Michael and Nikisha, and other city departments on the work they've put in to improve customer service here. In recent years, the effort that the city has been put into improving interdepartmental coordination and communication has been noticed by the community, and it's a very good place to work from as we dive into some of these more technical issues and how we can improve the code and how the city functions. With that, I will pick up this remote and get into the diagnosis and recommendation report. So again, this is a 30-page paper. We have a lot of findings and a lot of recommendations. In the next couple slides, I'll just be touching on the top issues, just to focus the conversation, and we're happy to answer any other questions you may have about the report once we get to discussion. So the core issues. That includes development by variance. We heard, again, if you can keep track of how many times I say variance in this, you'll have a high score. It's the most significant issue. Like I said earlier, the development, the variance process is for exceptional circumstance, but it's become a bit of a standard pathway for routine development adjustments. Projects that should receive maybe more simple administrative approval are requiring additional planning commission hearings and taking up more staff and a lot of your time as well. The zone framework, we have, we found that there are quite a few zones that are kind of catch-all zones. They are applied to many different parcels regardless of their context, and they create a situation where very different types of projects are subject to the same set of standards. An easy example is, you know, downtown versus the Highway 93 corridor. A lot of those parcels are all Zone C2 or general commercial, same set of standards, pretty different parts of town. We saw gaps in how the master plan has been implemented. The community has some really clearly stated goals for housing diversity and mixed-use development and adaptive reuse in the master plan and strategic plan, but the current zones don't have the tools to implement those goals effectively. And the last few are going to be a lot of the even deeper technical issues. We're talking outdated standards with regard to 1988 parking requirements and business categories like blueprinting establishments that are clearly from a different era. The world has changed significantly in 37 years. And kind of alongside just the organization of the code, the code has clearly received a lot of amendments over the years, but the structure just hasn't kept up, so there's a lot of organizational issues that make it hard for people to use today. And then lastly, just legal compliance. There are new laws, both state and federal, that need to be kept up. Some specific issues we'll discuss a little bit later are having to do with people's disabilities in group homes, affordable housing, and public hearings. We'll talk about the specifics in the future slides. And just to keep rolling, this is the result. We're seeing burden on staff, on applicants, on you all who have to hear, attend these meetings and hear these issues, that routine sorts of things, again, with best practices maybe could solve are turning into longer drawn-out processes, and it's to everybody's frustration. The process has gotten unpredictable. You know, we see zoning codes as an opportunity to implement the city's vision, implement the master plan, and new projects should have, be an opportunity to fulfill the city's vision and be a little exciting. It seems that right now, it's more people are losing sleep over each project rather than seeing it as an opportunity. As we mentioned earlier, the code cannot easily accommodate the types of housing that are envisioned in the master plan and the strategic plan. You know, townhomes, for example, are specifically called out, senior housing options, and they can fit inside the city's existing growth control framework, but the code just isn't helping them get to the finish line. And then, again, legal risks. There are just issues with, this code does not align with state law, updated state law, and some federal requirements, and we would recommend, you know, updating that either through simple cross-references or a deeper look. One issue that comes to mind is the affordable housing density bonus with Nevada State, which I can bring up a little bit later. But of course, the good news is, these are all solvable problems, and I'm going to walk you through our seven key recommendations that directly address them. So first off is, again, development by variance. This was a quote from one of our focus groups. Somebody said, "The city seems to be doing development by variance." And when we took a closer look at the code, we can understand why. Right now, administrative variances are limited to pretty narrow circumstances. We're looking at 10% adjustments for certain setbacks, height on buildings that are over two years old, and some provisions about residential fence and wall heights. We're not seeing one best practice that we tend to recommend, which is a process for minor revisions to approved projects. That means that after a project's been approved and as the development process continues, there might need to be a small change to adjust to site circumstances. It ends up being another process to go back for a hearing, there's more paperwork. And overall, just our recommendation is pretty straightforward. If you could expand administrative variances to 15%, 20% for most dimensional standards with clear criteria about when and how that's allowed, it could likely reduce a lot of the staff and applicant burden and reduce some of that unpredictability of the process and allowing just an honest best practice, a look at, you know, if we reduce a 20-foot setback to 18 feet, does it really go against the master plan's vision? We also would recommend a minor revisions process for approved projects. Again, administrative review, relatively straightforward, specific thresholds could be created to address that. And then administrative interpretation procedure, just for any time that there's a question about how the code should be applied, leaving that up to the discretion of staff with, again, clear criteria to control how that determination would be made. Now, the zoning framework. This is the big-picture issue of, you know, what zones do you have? Do you have too many? Do you have too few? Overall, like I think I mentioned briefly earlier, the general commercial zone is holding a lot of weight for implementing your master plan. Amongst the master plan's land use designations, the general commercial zone is used to implement six of them, including residential, commercial, manufacturing, and mixed-use. And there are not any really context-specific standards for helping that C2 zone carry the burden of implementing all these different ideas of what the different neighborhoods and parts of the community should do and how they should look. At the same time, there's a proliferation of zones. You have several highly specialized districts. The most immediate ones are the agricultural, A1, as well as the senior housing, SH. They're applied to single parcels, and usually, not to jump too far ahead to the recommendations, but these could be simplified and turned into standards for these specific uses rather than being zones on their own. Though we're recommending reducing some of the zones, there are also some missing implementing zones. Your master plan has some really good ideas for the mixed-use commercial office, as well as the airport area commercial. We know that there was an RFP put out recently for some commercial development as well near the airport, and right now, the zones aren't there. The mixed-use commercial office is implemented by the C2 zone primarily, and the airport area is predominantly the special study zone, S, which doesn't really have any standards attached to it. Other than that, we're also seeing residential typology gaps, outdated uses, like I mentioned earlier. I'll talk a little bit more in the future slides about exact development standards and housing limitations. But overall, our recommendations are focused on consolidating some of these zones. One would be neighborhood commercial into general commercial. Neighborhood commercial is applied to about 24 parcels, and it's not that different from general commercial. That's an opportunity for consolidation. Also, maybe looking at your mobile home zones as well. There are two of them, they're relatively similar, they could be combined. And then also, yeah, converting your special-purpose zones to use-specific standards. That's a big best practice that we would recommend. You can reduce the number of zones but have more detailed standards for more predictable development when it comes to specific-to-use standards. And then context-specific zones. Again, the master plan's vision for downtown and for the mixed-use area is really good. It's very, pretty clear in the master plan, but the standards don't exist in the C2 zone to implement it. And I will move on to housing in the next slide to not stay too long here. With housing, like I mentioned earlier, the master plan does specifically call out townhomes, and the most recent strategic plan also kind of expands that conversation to other types of housing, more modern housing, housing that's more accessible to more different lifestyles and stages of life. From what we can see in the code right now, the types of housing envisioned are pretty straightforward. It's either going to be single-family, two-family, or a duplex or multifamily. There's not really any standards to facilitate townhomes or accessory dwelling units and senior housing options outside of the senior housing zone. And then there are not really dimensional standards that accommodate these housing forms as well. That is a best practice, which we'll talk about in the next slide, about how development standards can anticipate what a townhome might need to fit on an average-sized lot. We heard about a townhome development recently that apparently required many variances, and this is a housing type that's called for in the master plan and has been for years. It shouldn't need that many variances to get to the finish line. This is something the community has said it wants. So we would create, we would recommend creating additional standards for housing types, considering accessory dwelling units, and if those are appropriate for single-family or multifamily neighborhoods in the city, and then modernizing those residential developmental dimensional standards to accommodate these contemporary housing while, of course, respecting Boulder City's character. And kind of as I alluded to in the previous slide, senior housing provisions could be built into a broader residential framework rather than a separate zone. We would recommend making sure that different types and sizes and densities of senior housing are possible in all of the zones, residential zones of the city, within guidelines with, subject to clear criteria. So when we say modernized development standards, we do mean design standards as well for buildings, but I'll take a quick step over to parking requirements and light standards as well. As far as we can tell, the parking requirements are pretty one-size-fits-all right now. They aren't really specified with terms of square footage, or a number of seats, or the square, different numbers of bedrooms for residences. And we would generally recommend just adding some flexibility and making them a bit more context-specific. Lighting regulations appear outdated. We know that there's been efforts to implement dark-skY standards here before, but as far as for commercial properties, there's just not a lot of specificity in the code, and we would recommend that because we know Boulder City values the dark sky and values this type of aesthetic character. And again, development standards, modern development patterns, and again, modern can mean a lot of different things, but in this case, it's mainly about being specific in the code rather than vague, and that's mainly, you know, our big-picture message for a lot of this report. When we talk about building form, we'll have some examples on the next slide, and otherwise, we recommend, you know, comprehensive lighting standards. We would say, you know, the brightness, temperature, location, you can make it more pedestrian-friendly, you could recommend it's at a certain height or something like that. Just putting these standards to the paper so that people can easily reference them, I think, could go a long way towards making this code a bit more up-to-date and making it easier to use. So when we say modernizing development standards, we are talking about the, how the zoning code is a tool that can incorporate best practices to implement policy. So one of the policy goals that's repeated several times in the master plan is pedestrian orientation. The tools that the zoning code has in its toolbox to implement that are things like building placement, building form, and building transitions. We have some examples up here on the slide. This is an example from a code that just shows how you can incorporate relatively straightforward illustrations to both illustrate these standards and help people visualize them, and then add greater specificity to make sure that you're actually achieving that pedestrian orientation. And we do see this a lot in zoning codes, especially ones that are a little bit older, is that the space between a kind of aspirational policy and a master plan and the zoning code just hasn't been bridged yet. So it's not really new ideas in terms of modernizing, it's really just getting back to what zoning codes are supposed to do, which, again, is to implement policy. This is a pretty advanced form of, you know, really illustrating and specifying standards. They can be simpler. This is another good example, I think, for also showing how pedestrian orientation could just be a matter of just giving a little bit of flexibility and allowing developments to progress as the landowner or the developer would like to see it. It's a minimum level of design, it's a minimum level of development regulation, and then allowing the design outcome to come from that. So on the right here, we have street-level transparency. The idea is to prevent boring, blank walls, making the pedestrian environment a little bit more interesting, and it's mainly just establishing, here is the transparency zone, you can use windows, you can use doors, but this is the envelope to work in. And the same for roof variation. This is just to prevent the big, boxy buildings. We want to reduce monotony. I think a lot of people tend to not like the look of big boxes, and so it's just a matter of saying at least 18 inches between roof forms, and that could, then, the developer could do more than that if they'd like to, but just having that minimum for the design outcomes that the city wants. Next, we're going to talk about the sign code. Sign regulations mainly echo recommendations we're making throughout the rest of this report. We say reorganize, we say streamline, we say make more user-friendly. Specifically, we found and heard that the sign regulations are just complex. They are built on base regulations plus sign districts in some cases, plus use-specific regulations in some cases. We would recommend either going with a zone-based or use-based approach and getting rid of the district approach altogether, and just integrating that into the underlying zones. We would actually more strongly recommend zone-based, though we have seen use-based as well. The temporary sign provisions, we heard specifically from people that people had different perspectives on what is allowed. There was significant disagreement. We summarized that in our interview summary, and we took a look at the code and we saw it. We saw in one place it says A-frames are not allowed, and in another place, it said that portable signs, including A-frames, are okay. It creates confusion, and specifically for, I think, business owners as well, there was quite a bit of frustration about who is and is not allowed to have a temporary, relatively simple sign to direct people to their business. And then overall, we have some examples here. There are relatively outdated graphics and measurement standards in the code. We'd recommend something a little bit clearer and a little bit easier to read, and this also, of course, incorporating some objective standards into it just to make it really easy for people to open up the code, make it user-friendly, and utilize it so they can get to where they want to go. Otherwise, we'd also recommend addressing modern sign technologies. Now, to be specific, we're not saying necessarily allowing electronic signs or LED signs, but these are becoming more popular. We'd We'd recommend at least, including, you know, if you're going to allow them, addressing brightness, addressing animation limits or hours of operation. This could go a long way towards, again, create, making the process a bit more predictable. Zooming all the way back out to code organization, generally, we just found related chapters being dispersed throughout the code, and again, for user-friendliness, we'd recommend generally organizing related provisions by parts. This is a best practice we often recommend, saying, you know, the example on the right shows that there's a general part, zone regulations, citywide standards, procedures, and definitions. It groups everything together, and it also eliminates numbering gaps, and it has a more logical organization. When we say logical, we mean, you know, from most frequently used to less frequently used. Some specific examples from the existing code, we found procedures located in chapters 24, 26, and 30 through 36. We noted the variances were before general requirements for procedures, which, given how frequently we're mentioning them, maybe that is a more frequently-used section of the code. But we also saw special-purpose zones, eight through nine, 14 through 19, and 22, and 45. It's a lot of flipping back and forth, and we think that if they were at least in one place, organized by related content, it would be easier to use the code. And lastly, legal compliance. Don't worry, we don't think you're immediately breaking the law or anything like that, but we did see some things where we think a closer look would be valued. Specifically with the code's group home or persons with disabilities, as it's also called, requirements, we saw that there's a spacing requirement, and then another subtype of housing for persons with disabilities require a conditional use permit. Generally, that could be construed as going against the Fair Housing Act. We recommend taking a closer look at that to make sure that it's not. There's both Nevada state law involved there as well as federal law, though Nevada law, in the code, there's some Nevada state law that is cited, and it's been updated, so at least those references need to be updated. The affordable housing requirement, density bonus, it's not specifically required by state law, though your master plan does state that of the menu of options that the Nevada legislature has said can be adopted to encourage affordable housing, the city has said that they would, they would implement this density bonus. To be clear, the code does have a low-income or senior housing procedure involved in the growth control ordinance, but it's not to the letter of state law as far as how the Nevada legislature anticipates an affordable housing density bonus to be implemented. So, we would recommend cross-referencing to that or incorporating those positions, provisions into the code. And then lastly, minor amendments to review procedures. We see that the city does, it says shall, have an additional preliminary subdivision map required before a tentative map. We understand that in practice, this is, that subdivision, tentative maps, the decisions are within 45 days. Public hearings should be within 65 days after filing. We understand that in practice, this is done in the city, but it would be best practice also to incorporate these provisions, either, again, cross-references or incorporating these timelines into the code for full compliance. And with that, I will give it back to Jen for how you could maybe implement a lot of these things. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ethan. So, I just want to acknowledge with these recommendations that we're making, they would be best addressed in a comprehensive zoning code update. However, there are different approaches that cities take when tackling these kinds of updates. Some cities decide to do phased approaches, where they tackle the most kind of critical, urgent items first, and then, in a second phase, do the comprehensive update. There are certain recommendations that are better suited to be done in a targeted way. Those are typically items that are in standalone, kind of unique or individual sections of the code, where they can be kind of pulled out, updated, and slotted back in. Some examples of those are things like the procedures, signs, legal compliance, where you can take those pieces out, update them, and put them back in. There are other provisions that maybe walk the line of depending on the scope of the amendment could be done in a targeted fashion versus really necessitating more of a comprehensive look. But then there are certain amendments that really can only successfully be addressed in a full comprehensive update, like the code organization overall, or those zone framework updates. So, we, we've done this, these kinds of updates, all sorts of ways, and so, we're, we're happy to answer questions or hear from you today about what your priorities are, what questions you have, and kind of figure out what the best strategy is. But, yeah, but there are, there are some options. So then, the questions we've posed for this study session is to hear from you about if you have any questions about the findings and recommendations we've identified, and I, and hear from you about what recommendations you think are the highest priority. That can help us kind of gauge what would be the most effective way to proceed. And then, is there anything we're missing? Ethan was pretty thorough in finding a lot of areas for improvement, but are there things that we missed? So, with that, I just want to say thank you very much for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jen and Ethan, for all the work that you did and presenting it so concise and clearly. If you can leave those questions up, I am happy to ask those questions so that we can start some discussion. Or is there anyone here that has any questions about the findings and recommendations at this time? Councilwoman Booth?
One of the things you were talking about, and I don't know if it can be handled in zoning, is that affordable housing. We don't have a lot of land for housing here, very little land to be built on. So, is that something we should take out, or we should put some land aside? That would be a question I would have. And then, I'm just going to say, I'm on US 93 coming in, Boulder City Parkway now, and on one side of the street is Zone C something. On the other side, I can sell cars on my side, but the guy across the street can't. So, that definitely needs to be fixed. But having been on the planning commission, where we had to do variances sometimes, was on substandard lots, that we have something in there to handle the substandard lots, because we have a lot of them in Boulder City. And right now, I think only tiny houses can go on, in mobile home areas, but they have some of those tiny homes that could go on some of these substandard lots. So, and then, with the accessory building for a substandard lot, I think that needs to be handled. And then, my other would be landscape, have something in the zoning about landscaping, because, so that we have a clear view of what we're doing since we're being, we don't want grass going in and stuff like that, so I think we need to have something in there about landscaping. And those are the questions I have.
So, I'm not sure if those are all questions or just really good comments on our, they're wonderful comments. We really appreciate those. So, we appreciate those. I think those are excellent and do align with, as Ethan mentioned, the analysis that we've done, but in terms of when you talk about, should the city consider, say, dedicating land for affordable housing? We're talking about the zoning ordinance itself, right? Not the zoning map, so that's a different policy discussion. It can go hand-in-hand with, with this, but, but we didn't look at, at that type of analysis.
Right. Though, again, the city has said in its master plan that an affordable housing density bonus is the preferred option for implementing the states, and this is again where the state law oversees local law, but the preferred option in Boulder City is the density bonus would be the preferred option for implementing affordable housing. There are options. There's funds and new fees, but when the city looked at the option, the menu of options available from that Nevada state law, they said the density bonus would be the best option. And that's often how people will enable affordable housing, is you allow certain, a certain extra amount of density or height on a given lot, but as far as which lot that is, that would be the decision outside of the code.
And also, the patio homes and townhomes, that's desperately needed here, because that does bring in some affordable housing, because they are smaller lots, so.
I have a question. Have you guys gone through, as part of your recommendation, gone through and prioritized these high-level, like, you know, of course, we want to be compliant with state law first, and then, high-level cause and effect for each one as we go through? Which ones are prioritized? Which ones are going to be quick hits? Which ones are going to be more involved?
That's a great question. I think from, from our point of view, absolutely, legal compliance is, is really crucial and necessary. I think the, as Ethan mentioned, that development by variance seems to be a really pervasive issue in the community, and I think the strides that could be made to address that first is probably one of the highest-level priorities we see. Of course, implementing and being consistent with your master plan is really important, too. I know there may be discussions about potentially doing an update or looking more closely at those master plan policies, but we think that would be an important place to focus as well. So, I think legal, development by variance, and then those crucial items for achieving your vision in your master plan would be kind of a rough order of priority.
So then, to make the changes as we go through, I'm sure the council will be voting on them and making them law, or changes as we go through, and we'll just have separate meanings for each one, or we'll group them into, like, like, we'll tackle variants and zonings on commercial and residential. We'll, you know, I think a great one is, you know, being able to do senior housing anywhere, you know, things like that, you know, try and bundle them as we go. What do you think, it'll take like a year, two years to?
Yeah, so I think, so in answering your first question, I was thinking about the items that might move the needle best for the jurisdiction. In terms of how that's structured and implemented in a code update is a little bit different of a question. I think, based on these package of recommendations, we do think that a comprehensive update is the best way to address all of these items in one fell swoop. Now, we understand that's not always possible for a jurisdiction. Those kinds of comprehensive updates will typically take 12 months, could take 18 months. The downside to doing a phased approach is that often, it takes a longer timeline to accomplish everything, because you're going through, you know, one package going to hearings, another package going to hearings. So, it just depends, I think, on what's most palatable in, in order of achieving success with the changes, and also, if there are other resource limitations in terms of how, you know, how to proceed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Usher?
So, I went onto your website and looked at some of the other projects that you had worked on around the nation. Did you find it a challenge that we're historic district versus conservative or an area that's more modern? Because we have that mix here. It's a kind of eclectic. Does that come into zoning, like a unique type of zoning? Because I didn't hear you talk anything in reference to historic towns, and, because the lighting, signs, well, it's different here. We're not Vegas, we're not Henderson, we're Boulder City. So, did you take that into accountability with the zoning?
So, we know that you just had your historic preservation ordinance updated, and that's fairly fresh and new and rolling out and seeing how that's working, so, so we want to see how that, how that plays out. In terms of our experience, we have done, we have worked in communities where we've established landmark sign standards and procedures, preserving some of the key, and in your case, an entire corridor of really fantastic historic, you know, kind of, you know, gut feeling of wow, nostalgia, and where you're at. So, I think, yes, we've worked in communities where, where that is a priority, and what we do is ensure that the regulations we put forward don't impede on the preservation of those core aesthetic items or characters, or character or aspects of development you have today. And typically, we write into the code procedures for how you can preserve those if those are not, say, reflected or addressed in your historic preservation ordinance. But that's something we work really closely with the community on, because we want to make sure we're characterizing that appropriately and creating processes that work for you.
Okay, and the other question I had was on ADA. The zoning for ADA, we're kind of going through that process now of making sure that we're up to the federal standards of ADA. Is that also, I didn't see that in the package or addressed?
ADA will typically be addressed through your building code instead of your zoning code, and things like ADA parking and access, the zoning code typically would include, like, caveats, right? If ADA requirements supersede, for example, something in, that would be necessitated for accessibility, that that would prevail. And we've also seen provisions for what's called reasonable accommodation, where if there is a zoning provision that is hampering access or accessibility, that there's a process, it's administrative, an administrative process that says, yes, you can encroach into the setback because you need a ramp to access the building. So, we do, we have experienced that, but ADA specifically is typically addressed in the building code and supported by the zoning code.
And if I could add one thing on the historic preservation angle as well, you know, we did take a look at your historic preservation plan, and we did look, review the new guidelines, but we wanted to respect that they were brand-new, that there was a lot of community effort that was put into them. Oh, of course, thank you. We wanted to respect that these were brand-new guidelines, and they were really good, too. We didn't want to put too much critique on them because they were brand-new, there needs to be more time for them to play out, but we did include these images of the modern development and design standards, the one in our presentation, because we were hoping that also they would look familiar. When we took a look at your historic preservation guidelines, there are a lot of really good, modern, up-to-date images in there. There's a lot of lines that are pointing out different elements of building form that are desired. When we talk about modern development and design standards, it's mainly just adding numbers and objective criteria, quantifiable things, to those types of diagrams. So, were the code to be updated and that wrapped in, that's the kind of way that we would apply some of these best practices to what you're already doing. So, again, hopefully, some of these modern practices are familiar because of that process that was just pursued, and, you know, maybe you could expect a similar type of considerations if it was turned on the rest of the code and the community.
So, in previous development plans with other cities, do, we, we come up with the recommendations, we accept the recommendations, and then, do we have town halls? Do we have open meetings, quorums that people are invited from the community to come in and give input?
Yeah, it can happen. The general standard approach is, we're there to be a comprehensive code update. There would be a lot of scene setting. We'd probably be utilizing a lot of the things we've already heard from this project. And then, there'd be a series of establishing the table of contents and what's going to change, the style of the code as well. And then, there'd be several drafts, and usually, our clients like to see along the way, you know, a study session after the administrative draft comes out, and another study session after that draft has been revised, with then final hearings before adoption. So, there could be anywhere from two to, what, four drafts, depending on what the client and the community would like. I don't know, Jen, would you add anything else to that? Because it could be a long, long or shorter process.
Yeah, exactly, Ethan. I mean, we would tailor it to what was appropriate for the community, and in terms of the community outreach, that can vary really significantly based on the needs of the, of the community. And if, you know, if we need to do certain outreach to certain areas of the community or different business owners, based on different aspects of the code, we, we would do that. So, it can vary based on the level of community engagement. We have also, just for, you know, flip side, is that in some cases, we go into a community that has just updated their master plan. There's public engagement fatigue. No one wants to come out anymore. The zoning code is implementing all this policy that the community worked really hard to establish, so they're really focused. Do we do mostly a desktop zoning code update, bring it forward to planning commission and council as a master plan implementation effort, and it's met with little fanfare? So, just, so you can see kind of the extremes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you. Couple of questions. You know, there's been a fair amount stated about variances, and so, I want to ask a few questions, maybe mix in a couple statements that would lead to the questions. So, when we, of course, there's various zones, and, and then, therefore, there are standards for each zone, and then, variance procedures. And so, when we talk about the few residential developments that we have had or are upcoming, do you see those standards as pretty clear and straightforward? Now, I know that in the recent years, it's been a few now, that an area right off Nevada Way, which are some, what we might have classified as townhomes or attached homes, since the code didn't really address those, that required variances by nature of the, the fact that it wasn't addressed at all. So, I understand that, right? But as far as the other more typical residential development, do you see some issues therein where you would streamline to more administrative variances rather than those that would come before the planning commission? before the planning commission?
We didn't take a real comprehensive look at all recent, oh, thank you, Jen, all recent developments. The townhome one stood out to us, especially because of its simplicity. It seemed that with that very, I believe it was 23 or 24, that, you know, it was two feet. That's that 20% difference, right, in the setback standard that could have been addressed relatively easily. For more serious issues, for substandard lots and things like that, variances certainly should still be allowed. And again, it's going back to how it's stated in the code, it's exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. So though, that we didn't look at all recent developments and do a comprehensive review of those, what we heard from the community over and over again, and maybe their memory is long, but the stakeholders we spoke with just said that they are used all the time, and that that is, that's the issue, is that it's, you said, um, public engagement fatigue earlier, it's variance fatigue is mainly the message that we got from the people that we spoke with.
Yeah, certainly, in what we consider this downtown business and historic area, buildings are anywhere from 80, 90 years old to somewhat more recent. So it's hard to capture everything, and I believe that administrative variances may be most appropriate for that area, because almost every single business is slightly different. Do you create objective sta, now, staff is going to be the ones offering the administrative variance, right? And so they're going to own it, right? And it's going to rest on their shoulders, not on anybody that would sit up here or anywhere else. So that's a burden, right? And they would take potentially either some gratitude or some heat for the administrative variance. Do you create objective standards for the administrative variances? So they at least have something to lean on rather than just, yeah, I like that.
Thank you, yes. Typically, for administrative variances, there is a, there's two things, there's a threat, a limit, a cap on which the deviation can be for staff to approve it. Over that, it would get kicked up to planning commission. So that's one piece. The second piece is that there would be findings that city staff would have to make before approving administrative, an administrative variance. So it's not, is city staff happy today? Check here for yes, your administrative variance is approved. There would be specific findings to identify, there's a unique circumstance with the property, right? It's a steep slope, there's a building that's over 80 years old that doesn't comply with the code. There's reasons that makes it appropriate to issue that administrative variance. And so we would work with the city to make sure that the findings, I mean, we do this often and frequently, but this is something that we would work with city staff to make sure that those findings give them enough to be able to approve those administrative variances in the cases that they see repeatedly.
Thank you. Did you have a chance to review the five standard findings that are required in our current codes?
Yes.
Okay, would you recommend any changes to those findings necessarily, or just the ability to work within that?
Right. The overall approach is, you said correctly, like, objective findings, right? And so when we, and the reason why we approach these, we recommend approaching these code updates as comprehensive is because we often find that if you find one subjective finding, you're going to find them in other places, right? So the immediate example I have was, we saw in the conditional uses permit that there is subjective findings, like, will be designed, constructed, and operated so as to be compatible with the uses of land, the existing or planned character of the general vicinity. It's things like that that we would fix for a conditional use permit or for a variance, right? And again, as you were saying, right, is that we want the criteria to be established, reviewed by the council, agreed upon by the community, so that everybody knows the rules that are being played by. And so that's why, again, with this comprehensive approach, we try to say if it's a variance, if it's a conditional use permit, if it's a minor deviation, that each of these different actions and permit types would receive this kind of careful consideration, so that people know what they're getting into when they choose one route or another.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
If I may, just one other addition to that, is that in the
Your mic turned off, you might want to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. If I may add, that with these administrative decisions, we almost always build into our codes that there is an option for staff to be able to elevate a decision to planning commission if there are unique circumstances that warrant it. If there is something unusual, and they do not feel comfortable with making the decision at the staff level, that that is always an option to be able to pursue.
Right, thank you. Shifting gears a little bit, you talked a little about timelines, expectation, submittal, approvals, return. I know we've done some improvements as far as the ability to make some changes in red lines and so forth that serve the customer better, but are you suggesting that we review the current timelines for return, for initial review, for follow-up, and include those in the, in the codes? Or just some general statements about it, and then have an administrative policy that addresses that? What's your suggestion?
I'll start with two things directly from the report, and then I'll pass it to Jen. One is, we did mention that some of the timelines, some of that was with regard to Nevada state law. There's a, it's NRS 278, and I can't remember the exact one, but it's that, you know, 45 days after the submission of a tentative subdivision map, that there needs to be a decision for the, any action, conditional use permit variance, the expectation is that it would be within 65 days, there would be a meeting held. Now, in practice, the code states that the, that will be, the variance or the conditional use permit will be heard at the next meeting, usually within 65 days. For those specific cross-references, we just recommend making sure that at least state laws cross-reference to, or the correct number for state laws put in the code. As far as best practice recommendations, which is the other portion of this, we heard from stakeholders that, yeah, the timelines are unpredictable. In some cases, shot clocks, you know, specific timelines are established, you know, shall receive a response within 60 days with 45 days, something like that. Or if something has been sent back, an application is being sent back, isn't complete, making a promise, you know, that it's going to be within a month or something. That sort of thing isn't necessarily in the code, though. You kind of hit on that as well. It's more of a internal departmental decision. But the best practice recommendation is just to increase predictability. And again, it does sound very much like the city's departments have been really working at that. So do those things need to be codified? Not necessarily. It is more of a customer service and procedural thing. However, procedures could be made more clear, the rules by which the process happened could also increase that efficiency as well. And Jen, would you add anything there?
Thank you. And the last thing I had was just about the, the new airport, we'll call it, right?
Not the old airport.
Other than the old airport subarea. I appreciate, actually, that you guys addressed that. Sorry to be so casual, you guys, that that was addressed. And that's certainly an area where, you know, we could give some attention and maybe increase the economic development through some considerations in the various aspects.
We heard some great ideas about the old airport area and the new airport area when we spoke with folks during our interviews. I mean, fantastic ideas. We couldn't say, you know, we'll fix your zoning code and everything will get better, you know? But people were bringing some really exciting ideas, and that just, it goes back to what we said in our presentation, that, you know, these developments are opportunities to implement the city's vision, and the code should provide solutions and not get in the way.
So you have some suggestions, or will, or could have some for the old airport subarea as well as what we've talked about, the new area?
For codes. For codes, yes. And it would be mainly implementing the vision. Old airport subarea envisions mixed use and housing. C2 zone doesn't really enable that vision. New airport, this airport commercial, there's a whole subsection, you know, there's going to be this airport area commercial, it's going to appeal to aviators and visitors, there's going to be rental or lodging. The initial, what is it, the interim study zone doesn't implement that at all. We would definitely recommend an airport commercial zone, because the vision requires it, you know, really, that the zone, the zoning doesn't have the tools to implement that right now. And it's a good vision. It seems desired as well, from what we heard from people. So the code just needs to meet people where they're already at.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sheri. I've got a couple of things that I wanted to ask, and we've talked about the implementation and how it goes, and I guess just ignorantly not knowing, have we retained your services to walking us through, all the way through the finish line? Are you guys there as a resource? Is this something that's up for further discussion with the city? Love the presentation, just want to know how much more we can lean on you through implementation.
I don't see Michael getting up, I'll do Jen.
So the contract with LWC was just to do this assessment. We would need to go out to RFP again to hire a firm to move us through with the implementation process, and that will be the next step, because within the fiscal year '26 budget, there are funds available for us to move to that next step.
Beautiful, beautiful. I wanted to follow up on what Councilman Walton had brought up with kind of the administrative variance and increasing it to 20%. Is that the industry standard kind of across the board, is as an administrative leeway there? Or is this something that in 10 years, we see a slippery slope, and now we're going, well, it's only 20%? Let's raise it to 30, 40, and how do we prevent that?
That's a great question. We see the industry standard at between 10 to 20% typically, and that doesn't mean that all the administrative variance must be at 10 or 20%. We often have an administrative variance, say, for setbacks that differs from building height. So we're able to calibrate that based on the type of standard and what's considered acceptable in the community.
Perfect, love it. I want to ask lastly here about just the process and what you guys use, digging deeper past just kind of the code, but did you guys dive into any, like, lean six sigma and look at, like, the real efficiency through our departments to find maybe some of those bogged-down areas? Or was this clearly on the surface of zoning code and forget efficiency at all cost?
We're code doctors first and foremost.
Yeah, this is strictly the code, but we, we do want to tout that the better and clearer and easier your code is to implement does reduce the amount of questions that come through the counter, it does allow staff to operate more efficiently in making approvals and reviewing projects, so.
Absolutely, there was a lot of overlay in there, and that's what sparked the question, is spirit of efficiency. And so I've got comments on some other things, but I'll allow some others to.
Commissioner Crum?
Thank you. I just want to say that I was very impressed with your presentation and all of the information received, so thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions. With respect to the C1 and C2, your recommendation was to completely eliminate C1 because it only has, you know, 40, or what did I read, 40-some parcels total, 46 or something? Is there not an area, what's the distinction between the two, and is there not an area appropriate for C1?
What we found, thank you, Jen, what we found is that generally, in terms of the uses they allow, they're also very similar. The C1 zone is this, this neighborhood, we have, we said it here, it's a neighborhood commercial zone, and really that links back to the lot, the lot size that's allowed, so the C1 is smaller.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, Ethan has a lot of information in his brain right now. The C1, the distinction between C1 and C2 is that it has a limitation on the maximum size of certain businesses that can be operated in that zone. So in terms of looking at it, just on paper, the difference is very small, and then I believe there's fewer than 30 parcels zoned C1. So, I mean, on its face, it looks like an opportunity to maybe drop that zone. However, our finding about C2 is that C2 is doing too much work anyway, so kind of a refinement of those commercial zones is necessary, and so maybe there is an evolution of a, kind of a more neighborhood commercial zone that comes out of that, but we just don't think it's the C1 you have today.
I agree, but with that being said, for example, we had an issue come before the planning commission, so if it was all, you know, reduced or combined into C2, and then we wanted to make a commercial manufacturing zone, what about businesses currently in business that are manufacturing in the C2 zone? Then do they need some type of allowance to stay there, or are they grandfathered in? Because we just had an issue where I had to, there's manufacturing in the C2 zone that was, that's going to have an effect on other businesses. So how does that play out?
There's, the way that zoning often addresses that would be to establish care performance standards as well. We have certain communities that, I'm thinking of one we're working in, where noise is the big issue, they have a freeway nearby them. And so their main request for their comprehensive zoning code update is to both, actually, I think about this community for two different aspects, what you're talking about. They had five commercial zones, they had a new master plan, we reduced, we're going to be reducing it to three, completely new zones, we're combining them, and then pulling out, teasing out the nuances again in three. And then to address some of those older legacy businesses, then we're also adding to the zoning code, performance standards. They, we haven't decided yet if it's going to be zone-specific or use-specific, but that's kind of how that would be addressed, if you have some grandfathered-in older businesses, even if the use isn't exactly compliant with the new zone, you can still have some control over, is that a problem or not? And with a comprehensive update, you can decide whether or not that's a problem, depending on the performance standards you establish.
And I think, I'm not sure if the concern is about wanting to retain and not affect those existing businesses, and so zoning codes will always have non-conforming provisions that address what occurs to those existing businesses that are no longer allowed, how they can, of course, continue operating, what levels of improvements and additions can be made. So we work with some jurisdictions that are extremely liberal in those standards, and we work with other jurisdictions that are very strict. It's a matter of what your goal is. If you're trying to phase out those businesses, we would take a strict approach. If you're happy to allow them to continue operating, we would craft the non-conforming standards to be more liberal.
I understand, thank you, that's a great answer. And then I just have a comment with respect to the parking and the one-size-fits-all, because we've had requests for parking variances as well, and just my personal opinion on the parking standards, I think in the historic district, and I don't know what the magic number would be, but they should not, you know, we want that area to have a walkability and people moving around, and I think our parking standards are ridiculous for our historic area, and I think there should be a carve-out in the code that addresses the historic district specifically.
And to build off of what your code already contains, like reused redevelopment of historic buildings right now, they don't require any additional parking. That's good, that would be a best practice that was already present in the code. And if you dig into some of the parking-related question, issues in our report, we just, we would say then, shared parking provisions. Okay, you don't have to add parking, but what if a use is either in a mixed use or adjacent to another use? Can they at least share the parking lot or the parking available to them? That's another way to continue to increase pedestrian orientation and not have to build big parking garages or anything, while still, again, allowing the code to kind of get out of the way of that vision. That can be based off of specific reduction percentages based on time of day usage, again, that gets into the weeds, but that is a way that we would address that sort of issue.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding?
Okay, I kind of had a question. With your recommendation that we streamline and organize the code so that it's a little bit more succinct, right? When you have good bones, it works a lot better. And then put more of the fine details into each of those areas. Would you recommend, because clearly you talked about the legal aspect, right, that we need to become in compliance with, or would you recommend low-hanging fruit first that seems to be the fastest thing that you could do?
It's a tough call. There isn't one right, one right answer, and I think that's something that we would want to talk to staff about, and just hearing your feedback today can help inform that, but there's no one right answer.
Yeah.
I, and I would defer also to the city attorney on, like, urgency of legal, too.
Do you have something to add to that?
Not particularly, the, the consultant did a great job of identifying where we are a little bit behind on legal issues, and we definitely do need to update our code, especially with respect to provisions related to the Fair Housing Act. But of course, there's our code as written and our code, and how we are operating in practice as well. So I'm not, I believe that we could accomplish the objectives of bringing our code into legal compliance, both with a comprehensive legal compliance, both with a comprehensive update or with a piecemeal update. It's really up to council and staff and depending on budgeting, et cetera.
Mr. May.
So, staff over the last several years, Planning Commission and council has seen, we've tried to do incremental changes to address issues. I think here, because we have the funds available within fiscal year 26, this is the opportunity to really do a comprehensive update. It will have the most impact in terms of improving the readability of the code and usability of both our businesses and our residents.
Thank you. I mean, I look at this and I see 1988 comprehensive overview, last one. That's almost when I graduated from high school, so, and Fritz was three years old, so there it is. And there lies the difference, right?
I won't tell you whether I was born yet, but you can.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, please, further salt. So, and having money is available, I think it would be prudent of us as a young and more mature group up here to possibly discuss, this is our time to discuss and give recommendations or how we feel. Do we feel comprehensive? Do we feel piecemeal? Beth, fantastic, could you share?
I think from an economical efficiency perspective, doing the comprehensive all at once, all at the same time, hitting is probably the best way to go, in my opinion. There are, I started making a list as we were talking and putting numbers for priorities. They're all a priority. You know, I mean, one of my areas that I work in is risk management, so of course, the legal thing is at the top of my brain, but when you come down to the different zonings and the complexity that's out there, the efficiencies we'll gain from staff time, from the community, from both council and Planning Commission, I think doing the comprehensive right from the get-go is the best option.
I agree, and the only caveat to that is if we do identify anything legal that something comes up, I can't imagine that, Brittany, you're going to say, nope, it's not on the schedule till September, so we're not going to address it. So, the one-offs that come out that need the immediate priority, we absolutely can digest and run with that, but I second going at it comprehensively. We've heard it from staffing, from budget. I've spent probably a decade on this dais crying from the Planning Commission standpoint that we need to do this, and we finally have an opportunity to do it.
Hear, hear.
What I'd like to do, this is my first rodeo up here, and I'm clearly the assistant in charge of this, but if you have or would like to make comment, if you just give me the, so that I can just point at you, and please share with us your comments, your thoughts, your direction, because that's why we're here today, is to give some further direction on what we just received, so that staff knows how to proceed forward from this point.
And please, I mean, the questions there, if we are missing any key findings or recommendations, we want to hear. Clearly, we're amongst code lovers here, so please, you know, if there's anything we miss, we do want to hear it here right now.
I said my "hear, hear," so I'm done.
I want comprehensive also. Back when I was on the Planning Commission a long time ago, begging for this to be done. So, I think the comprehensive is the only way to go and get it cleaned up because the whole thing is an antique, and we need to get it changed. But I also wanted to say thank you, and it was a great job and helped me understand things a little bit better also, so thank you for a great job.
So, if I heard you right, some things that are historic in this community are wonderful. Other things could have a little facelift and look a little better.
You can print out the code and put it in one of your many wonderful antique shops as well.
So, I feel like what's being said is we would like to see a comprehensive overhaul. Is, am I seeing some shakings of heads, okay, at this time? Yes, Matt? Oh, sorry.
I'm all for a comprehensive approach, but it also has to be coupled with town hall meetings, involvement with the community, because I can tell you right now that, you all know it, Boulder City is resistant to sweeping changes. And if we're really going to basically rewrite the code and zoning, yeah, the community has to be involved. Thank you.
Absolutely agree. Steve, did you have something?
No, this is what I was going to mention.
You second that.
We've been here at meetings, and there's a lot of involvement from the communities, and I think a lot of it's misunderstanding, not knowing what we're doing or how, what's going to happen. So, I think a great explanation to our community and letting them know why we're doing it, who it's going to affect, and, you know, basically, I think that it needs to get done quickly. I don't see it dragging out over a year, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we'll never get anything done. So, it's like, I think we put it all in a bundle, and then, you know, put it out to the community, get feedback, and then execute.
It's a great idea, and I would love to see the government work quickly and efficiently and effectively myself. Are we looking for next steps as far as, do you want us to say we'd like you to go out for an RFP to be able to seek for someone for the process, or none of that kind of next steps or suggestions, or do you just want us to say yes?
No, yeah, we can't take that action today.
Not action, but direction?
The importance is kind of reiterating the three questions that were asked that were on the screen is, are you in agreement with LWC's recommendations of how we should proceed? And what I'm hearing is that you're in agreement. Is there anything that they missed? We haven't heard anything that they've missed, but this is the opportunity to provide us that input. We're going to take all this feedback, and what we will do as a next step is start working on that RFP to hire a firm to do the actual implementation. That will come before the city council for review in the form of the RFP, and then, you know, action taken, and our city attorney wants to say something?
Well, just, I think the next step, rather than formulate the RFP, because I'm looking at Nevada law, this could fall under professional services, I don't know, I'd have to look at that. So, but next steps would be, the direction or the feedback we're receiving today is their Planning Commission and council are supportive of the comprehensive update and the recommendations of LWC, and so then we can take that and move forward with next step, so then bring that forward.
Just a question procedure-wise, is it going to come to Planning Commission first, just like anything else, where we vet it, look at it, and then it goes to council? Or is it something that we work on together, or, you know, how does the procedure go for actually changing these laws?
In terms of the engagement, absolutely, there will be several opportunities for the public to provide engagement when we hire a firm to go through this process. But yes, anything with Title 11 requires a public hearing before the Planning Commission first, and the Planning Commission evaluates the changes and then makes their recommendation to the city council, which takes the final action.
So, some of the commissioners probably aren't going to like this, I mean, if we're going to fast-track this, do we do two meetings a month? Because I mean, if we stretch it out month over month over month, or we'd have one eight-hour meeting with 55 people, or 100 people in here.
Whoever is implementing, steer that ship.
Right, we would evaluate how best to effectuate that, how best to incorporate public comment and engagement, because that's going to be very important, to be able to bring something comprehensive to the Planning Commission and the city council.
I think, just like everything that comes in front of us, there'll be a lot of engagement on some topics, and it goes down on other stuff. Nobody will even be here, so that, you know, so I just, I guess feedback from the community is the biggest thing on what's important to our community.
Well, speaking of feedback from the community, at our recent town hall meeting concerning the Nevada Way revamp, or whatever it's called right now, you know, we can rewrite the code, we can change the municipal code, make changes to zoning, but if there's no enforcement, we haven't accomplished anything, and that needs to be addressed. But we have very weak code enforcement in this town, in my opinion, and that's something we really need to address because the overwhelming opinion at that town hall meeting was that there is no code enforcement in Boulder City. Unless you're, unless you've got, you know, residential, it is enforced. You go Weeds, New York, you'll get a letter, blah, blah, blah. But other than residential, I mean, when it takes six months for somebody who's flying oversized flags on illegal flag poles, and it takes six months for anything to be done, there's a problem in our enforcement.
So, hopefully with this comprehensive redo, right, that's, we lay the groundwork for something like that.
Well, I've been told that there are going to be changes to the encouragement permits.
I think we're getting a little bit off topic.
Off topic, yeah.
This agenda item is about Lisa Wise Consulting.
I get it, you don't want to talk about this, but it is going to come back.
Well, we can talk about it, just we have to stick to the agenda per NRS 241. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk with you offline after the meeting, too, if you'd like, but just for purposes of open meeting law, we are obligated by Nevada law to stick to the agenda, and so this is focused on Lisa Wise Consulting's recommendations.
Well, I think enforcement is part of the discussion, but that's fine.
Enforcement is, but we were getting off to specific circumstances and things like that, so that's why we have to, if you would like the code update to include more robust provisions on enforcement, that's something, that's a different topic than where we were headed, so, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
So, Michael, I just have a question. It may be for this meeting or not, and Brittany will let me know. When it comes to funding, we're talking to doing a comprehensive plan, it sounds like that's going to take a lot of money to do that. Is that being considered of what we could do and how much we have to do it and how far that funding would take us?
To clarify, this is the comprehensive update to Title 11, the zoning order, it's not updating the comprehensive plan, right.
Okay, please.
Sure, one last one. Michael, as you go forward and you take kind of our pointers and guidance, I'll just circle back around. We looked at the code, and this might be an opportunity to put it through the lens of efficiency within the departments and looking at kind of our cost-benefit analysis as we digest this as well. Trying to get multiple birds with one stone, if you will. Thank you.
Okay, does everyone feel like they've had their comments heard? Do you feel like you understand where we're coming from?
I do, so thank you very much. We very much appreciate this opportunity to bring together the Planning Commission and the city council to discuss this very important topic. I very much thank LWC, their team, and their assessment of our code, certainly from a staff perspective, this is very needed, and so we appreciate the conversation.
Great, thank you very much. We look forward to it, and thank you very much to Jen and Ethan for being here today. We appreciate it, and it was very nice to have us all sitting up around this and to talk, because never the twain shall meet sometimes, and so it's been very nice. Now, for the final portion, as we move on, we have public comment. In this public comment section, you may come up and for three minutes, discuss whatever you would like within reason, and just to let you know, because people don't always know, we are not allowed to discuss back, and sometimes questions are asked of us, and it looks as though we are not interested in answering, but that is not it at all. It's just that is the way that public comment is run in these open meetings. So, we join, if you would like to come up and you're in the building, please come up, or if you'd like to call, the phone number 702-589-9629. And please state your name and write it down for the record, thank you.
My name's Karen McManus, I wanted to thank the presenters here. I thought they had very valuable information to provide to the community. Also, thank members of council and members of the Planning Commission. You know, zoning is very important. Boulder City was a master-planned community by the federal government. The federal government allowed you to live here if they felt like it, and you got to live where they said you could live. Now, that's a little overboard, but that's how we got to where we are, is a master-planned community by a governmental body that determined how the city was going to be built. That's an exception because there was nothing here prior to that. But I think far too often, people start to forget how that all came about and why Boulder City is the way it is now. What I constantly hear when we have these types of discussions is growth. We need to grow more, we need to do this, we need to add that, we need to change this. Be very careful as you go about that process because we will lose Boulder City. We can become Vegas anytime we want, just get rid of our controlled growth, kill all the tortoises out there in Eldorado Valley, and we're off to the races. So, be careful about that. And a couple of things, you know, there's existing planning commissioners here today. There are some people on council who previously served on the Planning Commission. I can't tell you how many meetings I went to where, instead of following the law or considering what the zoning said, they just decided, well, you know what, this is what I want to do. That ability needs to be taken away from planning commissioners. They can no longer do what it is they feel like doing. Same applies to giving latitude to city staff. I saw a lot of very strange things come out of the city planner previously in years past that have no idea where it came up with. As far as this last code update being in 1988, well, the historic district was developed in 1986. It was established as a district. Not one single law went into effect until just recently on how we actually can obtain and control and preserve our historic district. And the whole city's not a historic district, it's well-established what is the historic district, and when I hear people talk about, you know, other things, I think they forget. Homes built in the 40s, 50s, 60s, they're not in the historic district, so they don't have the protections that were built into that preservation code. So, once again, when you're looking at this, there are a lot of substandard lots that are not in the historic district. The airport, I don't know why the growth there is always insisted upon, but how does that benefit the community? Once again, please be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the phone? No. Again, if you'd like to call in, it's 702-589-9629.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mammer for the record, 1310, Capri. Please do something about DC scooters. I had an accident with a kid. He's okay, but one of these kids is going to get killed. You have to do something, and do it soon. I met with city manager yesterday, thank you for your time to address this issue. I know you guys are taking steps, please do them fast before a kid gets killed. Thank you.
Is there anyone on the line?
Hi there, my name's Brian. I appreciate you guys putting all this together, appreciate you including us in it. I'm a huge fan of established rules and everyone's sticking to them, so it's encouraging that you brought all, you know, all of us on this side into it. It was brought up a bunch of times, especially kind of from here, to keep doing that, to include all of us, and we really appreciate that. We ask that you do this with us and for us, don't do it to us. A lot of things that get done are kind of with us, but some things that get done, it gets talked about, and then it just kind of gets done to us, and it doesn't pertain to what we're doing right here, so I'm not going to bring it up, but that happens, and we don't like it. And we like living here, and we like the way things are a lot, and sometimes changes are made, and we don't like it, and we don't appreciate it, and we don't want to see that happen. One of the things that was brought up was affordable housing. It was mentioned a couple of times, some sort of bonus. I'm not familiar with it. If we could learn more about what it is, what the amount is, and where that money goes, that would be helpful when it comes time to discuss if we want to make it happen. I don't know if it was exactly what happened, I don't know, like six months ago, some affordable housing thing, million people here, lots of really strong feelings about it, and it didn't happen. The affordable housing development didn't happen, and so I would think there'll be really strong feelings about that again, so if that- if that could just be really transparent, I think that would go a long way. And and I think Matt brought up about code enforcement, just kind of overall. That's been brought up about a bunch of different types of things. I think it'll happen again if code enforcement is still just, I don't remember his name, but um, but the one guy, kind of Monday through Friday, if he's still responsible for all of the code enforcement of absolutely everything, I mean, that that dude's not gonna be able to keep up. There's, there's, there's just no way. The app, I'm incredibly familiar with the app. If you guys are ever on there, you probably see my name on there pretty often, because I care an awful lot about this town. You probably see my pictures. You probably see my dashboard on there as I take pictures as I drive around town. I want this place to stay amazing. I want it to get even better. If we're relying on that one guy to do it, man, there's, there's just no way it ain't gonna happen. And then we talked about the ninety-three corridor. I just want to see, I wasn't sure where exactly that included. I know you can't answer right now. If we're talking about extending it or just what's already established, whatever it is, chilly jilies in our code, kind of, kind of down, or if there's thought of that getting extended. I haven't seen that, but I could have missed it. Yeah, and that's it.
Thank you. Oh, I was gonna ask you to write your name, and you, you guessed it. Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, anyone else in the building? Seeing no one on the phone and no one else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.